Monday, we gather for March sixth at six o'clock. We will have a resolution to reappoint members of the CEA, Mr. Murphy. It's my understanding we've had an opportunity to review those. And we will have a motion to reappoint two individuals on that. Any questions for Mr. Murphy on that item? Item three is a resolution to create an alcohol license for Rock's yep, brewing. Mr. Dickerson.
The zoning department and the pledge sheet have no issues with the request with the condition that is put on there that a restaurant will be on the property. I talked with the ABC board and they stated that they are okay with putting that on the resolution since they also require the restaurant to be there.
Okay, and this is a change in the type of license, correct, from just a?
Yes, to, it'll be restaurant liquor.
Very good, very good. Any questions for Mr. Dickerson on that item? Item four is a resolution authorizing the mayor to have an agreement with Aho Architects for design of new Hoover Fire Station number one. Mr. Aldaka.
Yes, sir, this is a professional agreement with Aho Architects. There are three components to it. The first one is going to be the design of the new fire station on fifteen ninety-six Montgomery Highway. The second one is going to be the space planning that relates to relocation of certain departments, city departments, to the new building at thirty twenty-one. And the third component can be the design of renovation of the building on thirty twenty-one.
Any questions for Mr. Aldaka on that item?
Just a couple of questions. Again, if you don't have this right now, this is a typical architectural contract. The, is this a based upon fee to cost of escalation? Bill, just verify that, because I'm just not a big fan of that.
We use the state of our land as scheduled fee payment?
The, but the, the fee can be, these architectural firms sometime can charge. I just agree with you on that little layoff. And only comment I will say is on these two, they have a, a fee to, so that's not okay, the section nine point seven, so they include termination fee and all that, so that's great. Yeah, those are only two comments, but those are good.
Good, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Any other questions, comments on that item? Mr. Aldaka, you'll stick around, please. For item five, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an MSA with Grubbs and Walker Consulting.
Yes, sir, they are, this is another professional agreement for consulting. That scout program management is a consultant firm that they will help us with pre-construction or pre-design and during construction for our, some of our various capital project. It gets us to get it started and help us with the design or construction of those capital projects.
Any questions for Mr. Aldaka on that item? Item six, a resolution accepting a bid for the mayor's office renovation. Mr. Aldaka.
Yes, sir, this is a budgeted project. We need a physical, twenty-three, we budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for it. We need additional work and office space for our staff in the mayor's office. And, and on February fifteen, at two o'clock, we received two bids and we opened them publicly at the Hoover City Hall here. One of them was the battle metal construction. The total base bid price was a hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. This second one was Jared Building Company. The total base bid price was sixty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. So a huge difference between them. And based on our architect, design and cost estimate is close to the second bid. So we are recommending that Jared Building Company to be awarded the bid as the lowest responsive and responsible bid.
What was the budget amount of that project, Mr. Aldaka?
Seventy-five thousand.
Get it pretty close, sir.
Yes, sir.
Little spare.
Little bit, hopefully you will not have any issues.
Very good, any questions for Mr. Aldaka on that item? Very well. Item seven is a resolution accepting a bid for the Oral Drive Sidewalk Improvement Project. Mr. Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Now, this resolution is to recommend awarding a bid for the Oral Drive Sidewalk Project. This project will construct a sidewalk from Gittler Drive on the east side of Oral Drive down to Star Lake. The staff received six bids on February fifteenth. After reviewing the bids, staff recommends award, awarding the bid to Avery Landscape and Associates in an amount of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars. This project is budgeted, there is two hundred thousand dollars wasted for the sidewalks of the sidewalk.
Another good question?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Reeves? That's a, that's an extension of that sidewalk, correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Terminates it, Gittler and Oral now, so it'll extend down to Star Lake. The neighborhood is very excited about it.
I'm very excited.
Yes, sir.
I run that sidewalk, I feel the street.
Yes, sir.
Good, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item eight, Miss Bolt, is a resolution amending the budget for fiscal year twenty-two.
So we have received requests from some various departments on some position upgrades. Alan's going to talk, or Mr. Rice will talk about some of the upgrades, but we're looking at around a total of eighty-two thousand dollars. And then we've also got a, a donation received from the fire department of twenty-five hundred and we budgeted, you know, we've recognized any revenue coming in and then recognizing the expenses going out for that. So I will let Mr. Rice speak to the positions.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. We've got some items here that you'll see listed on the budget amendment. This is in the spirit of a mid-year adjustment for some positions. We're also working with Amanda Boyd at the library. She's got some things that she's proposing and we just, we weren't able to get those onto this amendment, so we anticipated another one coming at the next meeting. So we'll kind of do this in two chapters. Item one is accounting specialist, payroll specialist. We currently have two people assigned to the payroll unit under the supervision of, of one of our division directors. We have two different positions. We have a grade eight and a grade six. The grade six just vacated. We had an individual leave to pursue another opportunity. And so what we're proposing is we have two people of equal capability and qualifications so that we have better redundancy and a little bit more, little bit more durable process there. As you know, that's a critical function, obviously, and we want to be able to have people who are equally trained and capable of conducting a payroll on their own if they had to. Number two is to create a maximum of thirty-two hours. It might actually be less, so this would be the highest possible dollar cost, and this is not all salary. The figure you see there would include benefits if the individual were to be over twenty-nine hours to assist in services that are rendered primarily in Aldridge Gardens and in support of the five oh one C, who acts, of course, as a fundraising arm for the city and brings in the, the capital funds that allow us to make improvement and expansion. We handle some membership services and some things as part of our agreement with the five oh one C. And this will actually leverage a full-time position that we have now to assist the rest of Park and Rec and give the five oh one a little bit more individualized attention in terms of supporting them. Line item number three is for an individual in our events program. We have two event coordinators and one event specialist, but as workloads have changed and we've added more venues and we've gotten busier, we find that what's happening is we're having to work that event specialist kind of out of class and task for some of the same things as the two coordinators. So we'd like to liberalize that and be sure that those people are interchangeable, equally trained, equally compensated, and, and compensated for the work that they're doing. And then number four, we have an individual who was brought into the city through the merger with Aldridge, and he was properly classed at the time as a building tradesworker by grade five, but he also has an events background. And so by virtue of his prior experience and knowledge and his abilities, he's also really been pitching in and doing a lot with citywide events, not just at Aldridge, but at all of our venues and including that complex and other places. So that's a simple five to six upgrade because we think he's really doing the job now with an event specialist.
Item five, Mr. Rice, about the fire department on that.
I'm sorry, I have to yield, Miss Bolt, on that.
I'm going to have to yield to Clay Billings because I have completely lost my train of thought on what this was.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Twenty-five hundred dollars?
I have no idea. I know we had a, we had a, an agreement between Shelby County that they pay us twenty-two thousand every year. I think that just came in just.
Yeah, that, this was a donation?
Could that be a donation from, from representatives, like, because I think we were supposed to get one too.
We don't have police, we do have this one for fire. Yeah, we, we can take this one off if we need to, maybe a little more clarification. Yeah.
We'll take any donations. I think we're concerned about how you all stand.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll take it.
Sure, we know that, we're good.
All right, well, you know, we can come up with a good reasoning about Monday night making sure of that, maybe you prefer to pump that to the twentieth, perhaps you do that as well, we'll defer to you guys.
Someone here about fire chief vacation.
We'll defer to you all and help us see if there are any questions up grounds one through four.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I think I understand we still haven't had a mid-year budget review yet, which is, should be coming up this month. Since these are me, all mid-year adjustments, I think I'd recommend, prefer that we all have a mid-year budget review before we make those adjustments.
I think the, I think the most recent financials, does that, does that get us to mid-year or do you have one more month to report on?
The, the last ones were Januaries.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, that was December. Next meeting will be Januaries. Which, let me add to that. That will be our Christmas sales, so that would be a better idea of where we, where we stand.
To that end, to his question though, if we continue on that schedule, then that would put us into June before we had a mid-year budget review, which I don't think.
Right.
We want to wait for.
Because we're a month behind on getting all the revenues in because they don't, you know, they come in a month after.
So if we were to have a mid-year budget review mid-year, we would be working with data that only through January.
Right.
I think the body would be okay with that.
Yeah, I, I think when we were discussing the budget for the year, we always planned a mid-year budget review in March too.
With the understanding what, that we wouldn't have real-time data.
Yeah, you wouldn't have March numbers because the revenue wouldn't begin yet.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, would you like to pull us together for a mid-year budget review?
Yeah, would I, I just, I wanted to ask a question about these, these three positions, how that would impact those people if we were to delay this till, what would be April before we could have that, is that correct?
It would, and, and I think, and I want to, I want to validate this with Miss Bolt, but I think if you guys were amenable to it, we could do something at five P M. on the twentieth and do a mid-year review at that point with the date that we have in hand, obviously, which is going to be a strong indication of our position for the year. But to your question, Mr. Posey, yes, these are, these are situations that, you know, the work has to get done and these people stepped in to do it, and then we realize as we analyze that, they're, they're being stretched beyond their current job description. And we're just trying to remain, you know, fair and equitable in our compensation program.
Wasn't some of these just evacuated?
I'm sorry.
Aren't some of these empty positions? Did you miss someone left and we're going to bring them back in?
Only the one, only the payroll position, line item number, number one. And so we can't fill it, we don't want to fill it at a six and then upgrade that person to like to fill it at the skill set that dictates pay grade eight. That's the only one that's vacant.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll just go back and think it would be wise to do a comprehensive review of everything at one time. I'll relate that to the body. If that's the rule of the body, we'll take that up Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions about budget for us? Item number nine, this is code law. Let's go back to item number four. I'll move back, I'll move too quickly through that. Council Murphy has a question. Item number four, Mr. Aldaka.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely for the fire station, so I don't know a lot about the state.
Maybe some documents may be missing. I don't see the proposal on this. Section eleven does have the, the basis of compensation.
Yes.
But it doesn't address what it means for that.
The state's actually.
What he's referring to, that's eleven dash three dash one, I believe, dash four.
Dash one, yeah.
Yes, sir. What he's referring to is the design of the space planning.
Yeah.
Yes, and he doesn't want to charge the city twice if we do the designs, space planning at the beginning and after that do the, do the, the study for the design space plan. We do the design for the building right after that. There would not be double charging the city for the services at the same time.
Yes, and I give that, so this is the basis of design, or another contract made for the actual design itself, or all the basis of design in?
All the, this, this agreement consists of three, three components, yes.
So where is the proposal? I don't see the proposal, and maybe this is a missing. I, I see the contract, but I don't see the proposal they submitted. I see the hourly rate.
Yes.
I see all of that, but I, I'm just concerned because the, and these, and these particular, you know, there's these particular, particular ones, you have to identify with fee structure, whether it's lump sum percentage, basis percentage, or, you know, or the, which I don't like at all, the, the escalation of construction costs. What they have to do is, is with the escalation of the building material, if it's three million dollars today is date, and then next year it goes up about forty percent, then the architect will charge you same effort now, they charge you the same effort, but they'll charge you more just because the escalation of the contract has increased. But I think it's just missing a proposal, needs a proposal with this because I don't, I don't see the, and probably just missing in the information that needs to be attached. You know, work breakdown structure to identify the level of work based upon the activities. And that.
I'll make sure that, that agreement been reviewed by the city attorney, every subject and everything, and I'll make sure that the city clerk's office has everything that we have. However, just to talk about his structures fee, the Aho Architects did say the state of our land, a structure fee for the architect work, and he agreed to even give us half percent below that.
But did he do a, last question I asked, they know a level of work for this square footage. They know a level of work. So typically they'll do a, a work breakdown structure for the level of work and then they can add some contingencies there for additional work. When, when we don't have a proposal and a level of effort for all disciplines, then that cost can start getting aggressively expensive. So I, we, I, I would, I would need a, and they, they have this because that's how they develop their fee. I, I need a work breakdown structure for this particular one and a proposal, that's all I would need. And if they need to put contingency in there, just make sure the contingency is defined as conferencing as needed.
If you see a unit that's section eleven dot five.
I'll see it, but it's not, it's not.
It's not what you're looking for.
Well, it's not. It would, I'll give you an example, sum and certain amount, percentage, a certain, a certain percentage values, other basic percentage of owner's budget of cost is, is no, isn't, is not defined at all. Even, yeah, they need to, just, they need to do that. They can just do that because even in section thirteen, it's very limited on what the scope of service, and again, this is widget work in a sense, building fireworks, if they built one before, they know, we just need a, if I can get that, I'll be fine.
Okay. Thank you, Council Murphy. Now, resume without their line. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a class tram. Ms. Henson. I understand you have an extra mill on wheels so we can.
I do.
Take both of those.
Fantastic. This is an ongoing community service agreement that we've been doing, gosh, over twenty-two years. So we're just wanting to see if we could get that approval again. And so that'll be for class tram and then for mills on wheels as well, the community service agreement.
These are budget items that the members get to review each year at budget time. This is just continuing that agreement with these two organizations. Any questions for Ms. Henson on that item?
Just one, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
First of all, commend you for your service to the community and all that stuff, that's great. And just want to know, on class tram, do you have any idea how many passengers we serve every year?
Okay, so I can definitely get that information before Monday to you, or I can get it tomorrow if you will find that, of course. I had it from the previous one, it wasn't asked, I didn't, I didn't get that.
No worries.
But I would definitely.
Monday's fine. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Very good, thank you, ma'am, we'll see you on Monday. I understand you have two special guests to introduce to us. Good. We look forward to that. Item number eleven is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a plat map for Baines Ridge, plat number one, Mr. Knight. Till I read this, I've been thinking everyone's, we're saying Baines Bridge, but it's Baines Ridge.
No, it's Bridge.
Bridge?
It is a bridge. You're right, that is correct. The Baines Bridge, so this is item that is not about a, a streamer to this body. This is simply taking the three parcels that council authorized and combining them into two. If you're familiar with the two bottom parcels, we call it the strip from the small strip of land where the Jefferson County and Cimberaisman is, from Yalory Woods, and then there was the, the riverfront parcel from Bama Concrete. It's combining those two so that they can be used for future park land, and then the upper parcel would be the parcel that we've always intended to sell or ground lease to a qualified user.
Very good, obviously this is the next step in getting us ready to accept.
Absolutely.
Proposal for that upper sector.
Yes, sir, it just allows the mayor to sign on the plat map so that we can get it, get an RFP out to developers.
Good, that's a big step. Any questions for Mr. Knight?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. That's the end of our consent agenda, of course, on Monday night. Anyone who'd like to move an item that we've just discussed down to the regular agenda, we will be happy to entertain that. But the regular agenda does have several items, beginning with item number twelve, a resolution authorizing a five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Rice, I know we've communicated a little bit about the need and the expectations of our bond rating agencies about that, but brief us a little bit on what this plan means.
And I will certainly rely on Miss Bolt's help throughout this conversation, but you all received, I emailed in the last few days, a couple of documents. And one was a post-capital plan, and there was an updated version that I think Wendy made it into the packets. I'm sorry, did they're updated? She's talking to NASA or somebody. I'm sorry. Did that updated capital improvement plan make it to their packets tonight? If not, we've got caught, didn't we? So you've got that, and then you've got, there was a request for detail on Hoover Met Stadium improvements, and then there was a distribution that Miss Bolt sent today, which is a fund balance allocation. So we're, we're going to kind of use those documents to talk about this entire process. And then there's some technical questions that you might have about the bonds themselves and the bond issuance process, or partners in Frasiling here, here certainly answering those questions. So an overview is that this, this effort is to propose to raise ninety-three million dollars in funds to apply toward three primary capital projects. One is, of course, the exit nine agreement, and I think you're all aware that the governor did sign that agreement the end of last week. So now the clock is ticking, and of course, we're within our thirty-day window to generate our portion of that, which is the sixty-one million dollars. So I, I know I'm talking about a lot of documents. It might be helpful first if you looked at the, the capital, proposed capital improvement document, which is the blue and white spreadsheet. I think all of y'all had that in front of you.
Well, we, we do not. Ms. Dickerson, can you pull that up? I know we have it via email.
And I've got, I've got a hard copy.
Okay, we could get that just to refer to, I think everyone knows what's on it, but just to refresh our memories, we could hold that, please. There it is on the screen as well.
Mr. President, I have a question from.
Yes, ma'am, Council Drury.
Mr. Rice, are these, are these figures any different from the ones that we discussed at the finance conference?
They're, they're slightly different, and I was going to make sure that we covered those differences. Yes, ma'am, there've been a couple of minor adjustments based on intervening events. So I think you've all got one now. So talking about exit nine, there's no change in that program. You'll see the sixty-one million dollar cost estimate. The proposal is that would be a hundred percent bond funded. We know that the expenditure timeframe is going to be extensive, it's going to be five to seven years. A lot of our money goes in first, so it's not necessarily evenly allocated over the construction period. We're doing additional right-of-way acquisition, we're doing utility relocations, some studies, things that we'll, we'll spend city money first on that, so our burn rate will be different than the state's. They'll come in at the construction phase. Some of our money will go into construction, but a lot of our money will be spent leading up to the construction phase. And, and there's been no change on that. In reference to Hoover Met Complex improvements, don't think I remembered to bring a bunch of copies of this, but this is a document that you got by email this, I think, within the last week. We'll certainly send that out again if needed or bring some copies for Monday night. This talks about approximately twenty million dollars in improvements over the next five years. This is everything from work that's ongoing right now, leading up to this next tournament, of things that we were obligated to do prior to the twenty twenty-three tournament this year. And, and on your capital plan, proposed capital plan, you'll see that that is proposed to be a combination of bond and capital budget. So about fifteen million from the bond would be applied toward that over the coming years. And the balance of that, it would come out of either this year's existing capital budget or other capital funds going forward in future years, our normal process every year. And in brief, we're talking about parking lot improvements, which is vast, a lot of improvements to the seating bowl and fan area, concourse renovation, concession restroom renovation, seating bowl upgrades, so things that are on the fan experience portion of the stadium. A left field ticket entry gate to be constructed from the lower parking lot, and then an outfield partial boardwalk area. So we will do some work behind the outfield to create some fan observation space and hospitality space. This is, this is subsetted from a much longer Christmas list of everything everybody could dream of that we could do out there. And we got pricing on every conceivable improvement that was reasonable. But the specific plan that we will come to you for in the future will be driven by our conversations with the Southeastern Conference. So we want to do things that enhance the stadium as an asset going forward for any event, but also are targeted to our conversations with the S E C. about a long-term operating agreement beyond our current agreement. So we can't tell you this is exactly what we'll come to propose, but we think this is what we'll come to propose based on a couple of years of discussions with them already and things that are important to them and things that we think will retain that hallmark event in our community. And then the third component is the performing arts setup. And this is where there were some modifications to Mr. Iver's question. This is one of the areas, this will be different than the iteration that you've seen before. So in the first, or I'm sorry, the second column, cost estimate, where it says Center for the Arts Park Construction, that dollar figure originally was seventeen million dollars, and I forgot that there needed to be a capital. And I forgot that there needed to be a capital, we've known it all along, I forgot to put it on this sheet. The seventeen million would be the bond funds. There's an additional approximately three million, based on estimates that we have at this point, that we need to come from capital funds for, you know, from, from this budget or future budgets. And, and I say this budget or future because that all depends on when the agreement is signed. And of course, several of you are aware that that's, that's still under negotiation and documents are moving back and forth. We're moving toward, uh, being able to bring you something for approval, but it's still in the process. So, that number changed. It went from seventeen to twenty, and the combination is bond funds, about seventeen of bond funds. That has not changed, and about three of, of capital funds. The other change was, um, I'm sorry, it was on the Met Complex improvements in the column, the F Y twenty-three column. We originally had three point five million due to conversations with the S E C, conversations with contractor. We've actually removed about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of work that we had planned to do prior to this coming tournament. So, that is, you'll see that reduction reflected. So, it's no longer three point five, it's now two point six. Uh, and I think those are the only two changes. Um, we increased the money to the Performing Arts Center. Well, we, we didn't increase it. We properly reflected all the money that's planned to go to the Performing Arts Center, and then we decreased that nine hundred thousand dollar reduction, um, to the Met Complex improvements. Those are the two things that changed from the one you got previously. Um, and I guess with that, I'll answer any questions about the overall capital plan. And then Tina and the gentleman from Fraser Lanier can help with bond-specific questions.
Mr. Rice, if you don't mind, and maybe this is for anybody that'd like to address this question. Talk to us about that expectation to, to establish this five-year capital plan and what the bond agencies are looking for in their request that we have that, and how that this is not a commitment to spend these funds, but yet a plan.
That's right.
To show the creditors, this is what we have planned in our minds, perhaps on the next five, and the importance of that toward our credit record.
That's right. I'll, I'll add a couple of comments, and then I'll yield to anybody else on the team that wants to say anything else. Um, it's one element of several pieces of the discussion with the bond rating agencies that paint the overall picture of financial health, um, financial discipline, financial management. And so, um, integral to that and in this current rating process were things like the six-month reserve fund. And then you'll see that on this document that Ms. Bolt emailed out. Um, you'll, you'll see that listed, that right off the top of our balance, our money that we have on hand is seventy-two million dollars, which is held as a six-month operating reserve. That was absolutely, I, I think it was a linchpin to the conversations. I don't know that they talk to a lot of cities that have six months in reserve. I've never heard of another city that has six months in reserve. There probably one somewhere, I'm not familiar with it. It's, it's certainly an anomaly in our state to have that much money in reserves. Um, another piece of the puzzle was, uh, the Rolling Reserve Act, which they didn't know to ask about. But we spent some time with both rating agencies explaining the ordinance of the resolution that was put in place by this body to ensure that we don't over-budget, that we budget on those twenty-year trends and not those last-year trends, which we see get cities, counties, state agencies in trouble. Because if you're budgeting on the last couple of years, you're budgeting on statistical outliers. So, we're, we're not doing that. You all put a process in place to smooth that out and, um, and make sure that we don't over-commit. And then the third piece, as you mentioned, Mr. Light, is the five-year capital plan. And it just, it's, it's not a contract. It doesn't say we're going to do all these things. It says these are things, this is assuming it's adopted by this body. It says that these are things that are priorities for this city. And they're, they're priorities for various reasons, and they've come up through various lines of conversation. But that we know where we're headed, we know what our intent is, and we know how we're going to pay for it. And I think it's very important for them to see that forecast. It's a forecast, it's a plan. It, it's not meaningless, but it's not an obligation on the part of this council or this city to do every one of these projects. This plan will change. I can assure you it will change. Um, you've heard me talk about, well, we're negotiating with the S E C. We're still in conversations with the developers and owners of Patton Creek. There will be changes that will result from all those conversations. And we'll be back to this body, much like from time to time, we do a budget amendment. We'll be back in front of you saying, hey, this is what we're asking you to change in the five-year capital plan. It's a planning tool, it's a budgeting tool, but I, I think it's a demonstrable sign of fiscal wherewithal and responsibility, uh, that we can all point to and say, we have a plan. We're not going point-to-point, you know, chasing the next shiny thing. We have five years' worth of, of major projects, and this is how we plan to pursue it. And I'll, I'll step away and let anybody else say anything to me.
I think Mr. Rice pretty well answered everything I would have said, but, um, also, you know, we wanted to get this definitely, since we were going to do rating presentations, but we don't mean to do it just for that reason. Um, every organization I've worked with in the past has always had a five-year plan. I think it's just important as just an operating, uh, standard for our city to have a five-year capital plan, as Alan mentioned, to see where we're going, what are the things that are coming up. And of course, we can make amendments as we need to.
Very good. As it relates solely to the five-year capital plan, do we have any questions for Mr. Rice or Ms. Bolt regarding that plan? And then we'll give the three individual bond items. Any questions about five-year? All right. The next three, uh, we'll take individually, and I, I want us to take as much time as necessary on these. This, these will likely be the largest financial decisions this body makes in this quadrant. Certainly, it's the largest I've made in my ten years. I had one in twenty sixteen that came close to this, but these are, uh, these are major decisions, and they're not taken lightly, nor have we entered into them lightly in our due diligence to consider these. But on Monday night, we will consider three different resolutions to issue general obligation bonds for three major capital projects, beginning with item number nine, I'm sorry, item number thirteen, for bonds to fund the I four fifty-nine interchange we've been calling exit nine. And Mr. Rice gave us some details, uh, regarding that. And I think each member is aware of the process the city has gone through with the Alabama Department of Transportation over the last several months to get us to this point where the governor has signed the state's commitment. And certainly just meets our obligation to meet the city's commitment. Mr. Rice, anything to add?
Um, if I could, I want to reiterate, and one member had asked for a piece of information we're still compiling, and I want to be sure we talk about that. We'll get that to the entire body. And that is a more definitive breakdown of the twenty million for the Performing Arts Center. Like, what does that consist of? Actually, I think two members asked for that.
Yeah, let's, let's take these one at a time, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
So, let's talk solely about item thirteen.
Ms. Bolt's going to start.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I think it might be beneficial to look at, um, before we go into this, look at where we stand on our fund balance and kind of the breakdown I sent you, uh, earlier today in the email, just talking about, um, some of the projects that we got, you know, committed to things that we've already approved and things that we're going forward. Uh, this, this was that spreadsheet you had up earlier.
Ms. Dickerson has it.
Yes, she has it. This was in the email. But I also want to point out, after our, um, we've already got our ratings back, our ratings report back, um, we were able to maintain based upon some of the things that we did, putting those policies in place that Mr. Rice referenced, and, and, uh, having a draft of a capital plan, we were able to maintain our triple-A rating with S and P and our double-A one with Moody's. So, we were very excited to maintain that, and, um, we're very proud of where we stand financially. So, this is just a breakdown of where, um, I talked about a good bit of this, um, the last council meeting where we presented financials. So, um, again, I'm going back to our beginning of year balance with twenty twenty-two.
We had the zoom.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. There we go. Okay. So, um, we started, you know, we know how we ended with twenty twenty-one, so that locked up our, um, fund balance, our general fund balance to eighty-two point one million. So, what, as we were looking last, um, when we looked at September financials, I forget how many, a couple of months ago, we were looking at that, so we were looking at a tentative, um, or preliminary number of adding thirty-four more million to our fund balance. So, I wanted to break that down. So, that gives us a total of one hundred and sixteen point four million. So, the rest of this is just a breakdown of how we tie back to that or where all these funds are committed. So, we had, our six-month reserve is about seventy-two million. Again, that's something that we have to look at every year as we budget. Um, when, basically, how you calculate a six-month reserve is you look at your overall expenditures for, um, and that includes those special items that show up on your financials or our budget report. When you look at that and then divide that by twelve, and that gives you your month average. So, right now, we're sitting at, just right at twelve, just a little under twelve. So, um, six-month reserve is seventy-two. So, we, that's already set aside, we've already, you know, set that based upon our ordinance. Um, our ARPA funds, remember, we, we are, they were sitting in fund balance because we got those funds the last couple of years. So, you know, this is the year we're allocating those. We already have, uh, or the body had already voted to move those to, uh, cover payroll. But again, that money was still sitting in our fund balance. So, it's still, we're reallocating that fund, those funds out of fund balance to cover payroll. So, that's the eight point nine. And then we talked about the sweeps that we needed to make to the capital projects funds. Um, and again, some of these will be sweeps again, I'm just kind of laying them out. But we had talked about the fourteen million, you know, the nine million that we, um, had allocated for twenty twenty-three, and then some projects from twenty twenty-two. Then the turf was nine million, the village station property that we've already paid for is one point three. Lorna Road building, one point nine, that we've also have recently closed on. The Hoover Met Complex improvements, again, I'll get down to that and talk about where some of that money came from. If this is money that, um, as Alan, Mr. Rice already presented, the two point six after we looked at, which was originally three point five. Um, the Lake Forest Dam, uh, two point eight, the fire station construction, one point five. Lorna Road remodel this year was five hundred thousand toward that. Um, the performing arts, three million, and then any other contingencies that we may have throughout the year of seven hundred ninety-one, and that equals back to the hundred and sixteen billion. So, that's basically funds that are unrestricted at this point. Um, I think I mentioned in the email, anything else that's on our financials, special revenue, capital projects, um, sewer, um, internal service funds, those are restricted funds, and therefore, those dollars are already allocated. So, looking at the H, uh, the Hoover Met improvements, um, we had already budgeted in our budget five hundred thousand dollars. We had a, a sweep of funds from S F M for one point five million. And so, that, um, gives us, and then the six hundred that we're allocating from general fund here, general fund balance, that gives us the two point six that is reflected on that capital improvement plan. So, that's kind of where all that money, um, goes. Now, Mr. Rice mentioned the, uh, Budget Stabilization Fund. If you remember, that was money coming out of the twenty twenty-three budget. That's not in fund balance. So, that's kind of moved forward, and we've already put that money in a separate fund to be restricted at this point. So, any questions about this, and then we can talk about the bonds.
Any questions about that, which Ms. Bolt has shared regarding our cash position? All right. Thank you, Ms. Bolt. Now, moving on to our bonds, beginning with the four fifty-nine interchange.
Yes, so Resolution six eight nine nine dash twenty-three is for, um, general obligation warrants in the amount of, uh, sixty-one million for the exchange. The bond amount, you know, we're going to do this all together, whatever the body decides to vote, but it would total ninety-three five, or if you add this up, all these three really total ninety-three. But of course, we've got fees and so forth, and we're hoping to see some par values and things like that, which may change those numbers a little bit too, but not to exceed ninety-three five. Um, so, this one, again, um, as we've already committed, um, we have to have this commitment from the city's, uh, portion of that interchange, uh, and especially with the, um, contract being signed by the governor, we've got to move forward to, uh, commit those funds.
Any questions about the sixty-one million for the item before you listed as item number thirteen? Very good. We can move to item fourteen. Resolution sixty-nine hundred dash twenty-three for the Center for the Arts. I was reminded on Sunday that it's not the Performing Arts Center, it is the Center for the Arts.
Center for the Arts, okay. Um, so, this one is, um, the seventeen million, and I think Mr. Rice kind of went over, you know, where all those funds are coming from in the capital improvement plan. This one is for, um, again, part of the total general obligation warrant that we're planning to do, but breaking it up into the different projects. Um, so, this one is for seventeen million. Um, any questions on that one?
Any questions from Ms. Bolt on that?
I've got one question, but I don't know, I think it might be a Mr. Rice question. One question I've been asked by citizens about this one particular thing is, okay, you're borrowing the money, but keep hearing this not a signed agreement. How close are we to having a signed agreement in hand with the developer to use these funds inside that building and, and for that park?
I don't know that there's an answer to that, and we can't give you a date. I had about a two-hour conversation with him this morning. It's time to put all the lawyers in a room and lock the door and not let them out. We're there, we have a draft lease and development agreement with them. We're in that back-and-forth stage. As of this morning, we had about thirty, thirty-four points to discuss with them. Um, and, and we're going to let the lawyers whittle down that list and probably bring us eight or nine business points that are not really legal matters, and then we'll have to sit down. Um, one of the owner's representatives will be in Hoover in mid-March. We talked about trying to expedite that legal conversation so that when he's physically here, we might be able to sit down and finalize all that. So, it is, it, I'm, I'd love to give you a date or even a range. It's just a process. I think, I think by this summer is fair. If we didn't think we were headed there, we wouldn't be looking for the money. So, I mean, we're, matter how, how many years, and those conversations are, I mean, we're, we're a lot farther. We have a lot less road ahead of us than we have behind us on this process, and we just have to push it over the goal line. But it's a highly technical document, as you can imagine. Just, it's going to take some more work and some more conversations. But we, we had them as recently as this morning, so. I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, there's no better answer.
It's a fair answer. I just thought it was a fair question to ask.
Sure. Yeah, it's not, it's not in speculation phase, it's in the drafting phase. It's kind of like the interstate. We don't have a blueprint yet, but we know we're going to build it.
I would also remind us that once we get the money, gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, we have three years to expend that, those funds on the project. So, if, if, Mayor, I think you'd agree, it better not take us three years to get there. Um, so, we do have time. Mr. Graves?
Yeah. Excuse me. Uh, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'd also like to add, um, the way that we would intend to draft the resolution, the way that the bond proceeds would be available to the city, is we would define these projects. Um, and if something should happen in a worst-case scenario, um, then, subject to the will of the council, uh, the council could reallocate, um, those proceeds towards another project. So, um, just because we've got it identified, uh, in the documents going towards the Center for Arts, like you said, um, there would be, if something should happen again, this is just an abundance of caution, that would be included in the documents. But again, those funds cannot be re- reallocated, uh, without the approval of the body.
I would add to what you said to another project, oh, we're to retire the date.
Better said.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So, if we borrow the money for the Center for the Arts, uh, and that deal falls through, so we have three years to expend it, are we paying interest on that, on those borrowed funds during that time?
Well, well, our muscle over this, um, yes, sir, you, you would be paying interest on it. I believe the, uh, I believe the intent, especially in today's environment, as far as the, uh, interest rate environment is concerned, um, the idea would be to invest those proceeds. Um, so, as far as the carrying costs or the negative arbitrage, that we like to call it, it can be the difference between what you're earning versus what you're paying. Um, those, we would love to have those funds invested so as to minimize that carrying costs that you would have. And conservatively, expended in three years, and then I'm not a lawyer, I refer to council and behind council, but there are also some other, um, some other exemptions if, if the funds aren't expended within that three-year period.
Arbitrage, excuse me, they have a first, and our investments can't exceed the interest.
Right. But that is correct.
We would have a loss at some, but try to minimize that.
The idea would be to try to minimize that. You can't necessarily make any money. Uh, and in today's environment, um, the hope would be that you would, um, you would be able to break even, thank you. able to break even with bank and soul.
Yes, and, um, since we had, we previously had an investment committee meeting just a few minutes ago, so we did talk with our investment advisor, um, that as soon as, um, since we, we know we've got to do the interchange, we know some of this is going forward, and once we get those bond proceeds, once, you know, they go to market and we get the funds on hand, we're looking at a investment meeting quickly after that to see what our investment options are.
Mr. President, one last, this question is, what's the call-in date for, for this? So, if it falls through and we want to get rid of that debt, what's the call-in date?
Eight to ten.
Eight to ten, eight to ten years is usually the call date for something along these lines.
Thank you.
So, there's, there's always something that comes up. Well, there's really two questions that always come up in conversations like we're having with these outside entities. The conversation with the state's a little different, because we have a funding agreement that says, okay, when the governor executes this, the clock's ticking. If you don't get the money, then the deal's off. We know that. If the other two conversations about, um, the Met Complex with the Southeastern Conference and, and about Patton Creek, there's a million questions, but there are two that always get asked, and they get asked multiple times throughout the conversation, negotiation. One is, how's the political support for this? Because they don't want to spend time and money if they don't think we're really gonna get approval to go forward with the project. The other is, do you already have the funding? And those are questions that we answer periodically. It's kind of like, you can put it on the meeting agenda, you know they're gonna ask you. How's the political support? Do you already have the funding? Because they are, in the case of the owner of Patton Creek, there are many hundreds of thousands of dollars into this process. We are not at this point. They want to know that we're serious. They want to know that there's political support to do the project, and that we can pay for the project. So, it's a little chicken and egg, and I totally understand, uh, your question, Dr. Middlebrooks. What happens if it doesn't go through? What happens if it does? And can we help it go through by saying, yes, we have the funding? So, I mean, that, that's kind of, that's always an element in the conversations. I just want to kind of share that, because it's, you know, we go back and say, well, we think we're gonna do it. We think we can get it. That's a different conversation, and there's alignment, and we have the money. That, that changes the entire complexion of the discussion. So, for what that's for.
Any other questions about the Center for the Arts bond? Very good. We'll move to item fifteen.
And this resolution is for, um, the fifteen million for the Hoover Met Complex, um, to move over those renovations that Mr. Rice, uh, went over during the, with the capital plan. So, again, this would all be lumped together in one general obligation warrant, but again, we're separating the resolutions out for each project. That can be restructured.
Mr. Rice, I don't want to speak for you, but I think it would be fair to say, much like the conversation with the Patton Creek developer and owner, it carries a significant weight. When you and Ms. Cobal go before the Southeastern Conference and say, our body is willing and has voted to borrow money. So, it helps in your negotiations, I suppose.
It does, and, and of course, our relationship there is, you know, the city's relationship with the SEC is phenomenal and multi, you know, spans over many decades. There's a high degree of trust, and we are still asked, are y'all on track? Or how's, how's, how's the money going? You know, those kind of things. We're asked that periodically. So, it, it, it is absolutely a piece of the conversation every time. And, and now, we just preemptively give updates. They know about this meeting tonight. They know about the bond issue. They know about, you know, as part of our good faith efforts to effectuate what we're saying we want to try to do for them, they know about the financial component. Does that help?
It does, yes, sir. Mr. Rice reviewed with us and the capital plan some details, but I'll open the floor to questions about this particular item.
Um, yeah, sorry, I'm the one that keeps asking these questions. So, y'all feel free to join me here. Uh, so, you discussed the relationship we have with the SEC ongoing for many decades, and we do have a phenomenal partnership with them. And I would hope that they recognize the value and beauty of keeping the tournament here in Hoover as much as we recognize the value and beauty of having it here. Uh, so, I guess, my question stems from the change of process, the changing of our thought process of, you know, going to them with, with this much funds in one month, um, trying to get a, a multi-year deal instead of prioritizing, in other words, prioritizing certain Met improvements year by year and keeping with the three-to-five-year deal that we've, we've always done. I'm just very hesitant to enter into additional debt that may not be required.
So, that's a great question. So, we want, we want a long-term deal for a couple of reasons. They do that with every other major championship. They've not moved to that model in baseball yet. We want to help them move to that model in baseball. It's a, you know, the last two or three years has been the fifteen million dollar economic impact per year on the community. That's substantial, obviously. Um, there are other people who want this tournament. We came under my predecessor's time. The, the decision was made at the SEC to move the tournament, and I don't know if many people know that. But, um, we lost it for a period of time, and some people on, on our team at that time scrambled and got on airplanes and showed a commitment that we now call the Thinley Center and the Hoover Met Complex, and we kept it. And so, um, it, it's gonna require an investment of money to realize that long-term annual economic investment, or economic impact, rather. And to your point, and you're, you're right on the money, no pun intended, we, we're not going to them saying, if you do this, we'll spend twenty million. We're saying, if we had twenty million to spend, how many years would you give us? And it's really not about the twenty million. It's about the specific list of prioritized improvements that adds up to the twenty million, if that, if that makes. So, we're not, it's not a, it's not a dollars and cents conversation, like if we spend this much money, how long will we stay? It's, we'll stay longer if we improve the seats, if we do this with the concourse, if we do that, if we make these fan experience improvements, these student activity improvements. So, but it, we would pace the expenditures to the length of the contract. So, if we don't get the maximum length that we're, we're hoping for, we won't be coming to you asking to spend all this money on those things. And it'll, it'll all come in, this is a good point to make, any, um, any savings on any of these projects will all come back to this body. It won't be reallocated. We will at some point bring you, uh, a list certain of what we want to do at the Met, for example, and if the negotiations don't go our way, or if their priorities change, and we do get a lot of years, but they want something different done, we'll be back before this body saying, hey, it's no longer about concourses, it's now about such and such. If, for example, there are, um, if the interstate project comes in under budget, which I say, you know, in some universe, that could happen in the future, um, we'll be back to this body saying, hey, we're four million dollars under budget. What do you want to do with that four million? There won't be any, yeah, we got four million dollars, let's get out. Every dollar will come back to this body for final allocation. If it's allocated and not needed for that original purpose, it comes back here for us to report to you and say, this is our status, this is what we propose, and there'll be additional approvals. Does that help?
It does. I guess I'm, I'm still wrestling with the value of a, of a long-term deal versus a shorter-term deal. So, a long-term deal, debt bond, shorter-term deal, prioritize yearly expenditures. And as you say, we may not spend all that, depending on how the negotiations go, but then we're still paying interest on, on that. So, that's where I'm struggling with, with that aspect of it.
Well, and that, I mean, at that point in time, you know, the body could decide, I mean, this is, this will never be a community without needs, right? The body could decide, well, there's three million dollars remaining that we're gonna spend, but we have other needs in parking lot. We have other lifestyle amenity improvements we want to make in the city, and while we have the money and because we've paid the interest, let's do that project. That would be totally at your behest. But, um, I, I think it's fair to say, I can envision a situation where all this money's not operationalized. These are the plans and the intended purposes. If something changes in these conversations we're talking about, um, I think there'll be a valid use somewhere in this community for this money, and it'll be at the behest of the body to determine what that is.
Or to decide to pay it back on the call date.
When that is an option.
And I want to point out also, this, um, the official statement is gonna be, um, worded, and the terms will be that we can change that. We're not, I mean, these projects will be listed, but we've got the opportunity to come back to the body to reallocate, um, any funds that we borrowed, that we did not use on these projects. So, we're wording the documents to be sure we can do that, and then we would bring that back before the body.
Mr. President, only comment I'll say, I'm glad to see that parking lot is, is on the part of his budget as a health and safety concern. Uh, it's always like a, you see me about other cities that have, uh, issues with striping and reflectivity. Uh, folks just fly. They don't even know where they're going, and I'm.
I have so, I have so much concern of someone being hit there. Uh, just, is in that budget as well to additional lighting, uh, as well in that, uh?
So, there are some lighting improvements that are proposed. We want to lay that though against the work we just had done to the ESCO, the Energy Services Upgrade, because a lot of that was done in the Met parking lot.
Right.
We don't know that they knew about those upgrades when they did the project budget. So, um, the lights are, you know, magnitude's better than they used to be, and it may be good enough, but if not, then there is some money programmed in there to continue to provide.
Even if the, this money is not spent on a particular project, it can definitely need some additional money for that parking lot, uh, out there. And, uh, so, I'm glad to see this has been realized.
And to your point, I don't want to get into the whole design, but there will be specific design features to prevent what we're seeing now, which is just these long, unimpeded runs where people can get up to speed, and then you have people biking, walking, and all those things. There would be curbing and lanes and traffic management built into it to help people operate at parking lot speed.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Rice, um, I guess I have three questions. Number one, um, what's the current contract? When is our contract entered at SEC currently, as it stands?
We have this year, the twenty-three tournament, the twenty-four tournament is guaranteed, and the twenty-five tournament is an optional year.
Okay. Uh, number two, I'm sure y'all are already doing this, but are there any plans to have overtures to the county to kind of help also to keep the SEC, just like they did with the Ampti Peter for Birmingham?
We certainly can have those conversations. Uh, we're having similar conversations with the county on a couple of other major projects, so it kind of gets into probably a strategy discussion among all the elected officials about what we want the ask to be and what the priorities are. We have, uh, gone to the CBB, and I think our funding increased by a factor of two point five. I think we went from fifty to a hundred and twenty-five, maybe two point two five. So, the CBB is increasing their support for this year, and we think that sets a new baseline for them. We'll continue to give them the opportunity to increase their support for the SEC tournament. Um, so, yeah, we, we're, we're thinking a little differently about next tournament partners now. There's been some change in the, in the contract construction. The contract is now directly between us and the conference, and so, that's given us a little bit more front-seat view of, of those issues. In the past, we were strictly providing a venue. Now, we're in the negotiation about how everything gets paid for. So, I think that opportunity's there.
All right, great. And last one, I know y'all are already on top of this, but just want to clarify, the Met Complex improvements they are making, I know that a lot of things that I've learned, um, with the council members from last year about being ADA compliant versus being ADA accessible, I'm assuming we're thinking outside the box on how to make the Met Complex more accessible to ADA, correct?
Right. So, everything we're talking about here, you know, the parking lot, obviously, when we say parking lot, we're talking about the main parking lot in front of the Met and the Thinley. So, all the satellite parking areas are only five years old. They're in good shape. Um, so, other than that main parking lot, everything else is really focused on the stadium itself, and of course, it's thirty-five years old. So, things have changed. We've made modifications along the way to accessing dugouts and certain other areas, um, uh, with, um, people, uh, living with disabilities in mind, and certainly, anything done here will be done under current codes. But then, we've also had a robust conversation about universal design, which Councilor Dr. Middlebrooks has led on. That is a, uh, that is a goodwill effort beyond even what the code requires. So, short answer is yes. The long answer is we'll have to do it to code, which is a far more accommodating code for people with disabilities than the one thirty-five years ago, and we have the layer of universal design.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, I've got more general overall question.
One.
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, to the body, is there any reason why we couldn't pull this into one motion and one resolution?
Uh, yeah, I prefer to keep them separate, because I'm still wrestling with some of my ideas on, on the individual projects.
Yeah, Mr. Posey, I know our bond folks probably have some thoughts about the wording. I want to do that to allow a member to support those items they want to support, and if for some reason, they don't want to support one or three, or two of the three, the opportunity to vote against that. So, that's why we're doing all three of those separately. And maybe come Monday night, we get seven votes in favor of all three of them. But if a member wishes to support some and not all, I'm waiting to have that opportunity.
Can we think about that? Okay, cool.
I will say, though, I don't think we need to turn back on, I, I think that's a decision we either need to make tonight. On, once we get these res, these resolutions written, our bond council has reviewed them. I don't think that's something we can change by another.
I think we're still waiting on some additional information on, on some of those, so, you know, it'd be hard to change my mind until I come up with that additional information.
And I, and I'd ask the body to validate this. The only piece that I'm aware of that we're still working on is that, um, more specific breakdown on the twenty million for the, um, Center for the Arts. So, if there's anything else you've requested and not gotten, or anything you think of between now and then, please let me know. We'll start pulling that together as well. That's the only piece I know we're still, still working on.
The one question I have, and I just want to talk through this, and I think it's a, it's a very good question, and I, I think I speak for everyone, that we would prefer to pay cash than to borrow money for anything. That's the way I manage my household. It's the way I manage my business. Ms. Bolt, have, going back to your cash position document, do you see anywhere in there where we could pay cash for any of these three? Obviously, I think we know the answer to the interchange. We don't have sixty-one million. But the other two items, do you see anywhere in there we could come up with cash without dipping into our ready day or without canceling some of these other projects? Do we have the cash to pay for any of these other two?
We do not, based upon what I just, uh, structured today. We've already voted on some of, uh, the majority of these items that we've already approved on. We know we're going forward, and that's where we're getting the money for those, so that we don't have to borrow money for those projects. So, we're pretty much at the end of the road on our fund balance.
Okay. My next question would be in terms of cash flow. Is there an opportunity to, as much as possible, predict future revenues and develop a plan where we could cash flow the construction or completion of these projects?
Um, based upon some of the things that we're looking at, again, you know, when we did the financials at the end of December, and we looked at that, we are right on target where our budget is. But again, looking at the economy by the end of the year, um, I think we're still gonna be in a good position. Will we be where we were in the last two years to have these large, um, excesses to give to fund balance? I'm, I'm saying no, based upon what the economy is, talking to my counterparts in other cities, larger cities than us, they're seeing some, uh, not a downturn of funds, but things flattening off, or revenues flattening out. So, I don't think we're gonna have the large excesses that we have had in the last two years.
Okay. To take that a step further, just looking at the capital budget, so, we budget about nine million a year toward capital.
Yes.
Is there an opportunity, and keeping in context of a five-year capital plan, is there an opportunity over five years to adjust our capital expenditure to quote-unquote cash flow a fifteen or twenty million dollar project?
Um, if we don't do anything else in that capital project fund.
So, yeah.
We've already got some obligations.
Nine million a year, over five years, forty-five million dollars, would do those two, the Performing Arts Center and Hoover Met, but we would do nothing else. Is that what I'm hearing?
That is exactly right. So, no other department would get any of their That is exactly right. So, no other department would get any of their other projects allocated.
Very good.
President, if I could add?
Yes, sir.
If I could add to that one thought, we, we do have some of our cash in this. We've got some in the manager, we've got some in the Performing Arts Center. So, I mean, to the extent that we feel like it's reasonable, we, we are putting traditional capital cash into this, but, but I think to Ms. Bolt's point, I mean, there's a reason we program nine million every year, because we have to maintain the capital needs of the city. So, we don't see the space to, to come from that money and do projects of this magnitude.
And I wanna contend my, or commend my colleagues again. You know, we, we've had some significant cash surpluses, but we did, in my opinion, the most prudent thing I've ever seen since I've been watching city government do, and that's shore up their financial future.
Absolutely.
We could've taken that money and applied toward a shiny new capital project, but we did something far greater, and that's investing in the future of the city. And I couldn't be more, more proud of that.
I, you know, in the former organizations I've worked with, for the state and the education system, you are required to keep a one-month reserve. Some of the organizations I worked with usually kept three, considering that helping. This is way beyond. But again, after we went through COVID, I think it is, you know, necessary that we did that, so that when we haven't, you know, if we have something else to happen, we have our fund that we know we're okay, and we won't have to go back and, you know, readjust budgets. So, you know, again, we don't wanna spend down our reserve. When we get to that point, we'll definitely look at cutting the budget. But again, we know that we're still gonna be okay, and I think that was definitely necessary. And I think that, um, it speaks to, um, the body's intellect as how we are planning for our future and to safeguard that. And I know, I appreciate that for my position.
Very good. One last call for any questions on items thirteen through fifteen. Very good dialogue. Thank you all for your input and conversation here. Hearing none, we'll move to item sixteen. We'll have a second reading, a public hearing, and a potential vote for an annexation of four-zero-two Campbell Lane, Mr. Peterson. Anything you on that? I know we had a first reading.
There's nothing in the office.
Any questions from the body on that item? We'll have two first readings, beginning with item number seventeen, an ordinance annex five-three-three-two Old Highway Two-eighty, AT&T Building. Mr. Corley?
Yes, sir. This is a, a parcel on Two-eighty right here, Perrin's Grocery, if you know where that is. And it's just a bill to hold in the mat, and so AT&T has made the application. They've completed the statutory requirements and are ready to move forward.
Very good. I'll remind the body that utilities are, are they considered utility?
Yes.
They are at below or underrated, triple. Commercial's double, residential's single, triple. So, it's a good find. Mayor Bicato has had this on his to-do list for a while, and I'm happy to see this come to fruition. I wanna thank him for all the work he's done in getting this. This is a big get right here. Any questions from the body on that? Item eighteen, is an ordinance to amend the short-term rental regulations. Mr. Mark? You get the keys on getting?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, um, my department had a chance to thoroughly go through the ordinance, and, uh, we are at a point where the application is ready and has been posted online, so we are open for business. But as part of that comprehensive look at the ordinance, uh, we noticed that, um, there was not a missing, and that was, uh, the ability to locate these facilities in another one of our non-residential districts, the PI Planned Industrial District. Uh, so, with our PI districts in planned unit developments, it is not uncommon for uses to cascade over into a, a district of higher intensity. So, you have it at present, permitted by right in the PR2 multifamily inputs, the PO Plan Office, and the PC Plan Commercial. Uh, so, to be, be consistent there and to allow for even more space, uh, for there to be opportunities for these uses, uh, we're coming to this body and asking for a conditional use designation in the PI Planned Industrial District. Conditional use instead of permitted, just because, given the nature of the use and some of the other items that could be located in planned industrial, we wanna make sure that the uses are, uh, compatible with one another. Uh, so, if we have a short-term rental-type business on one property, we wanna make sure that's compatible with, uh, what may be an industrial-type project on another, or if there are other plans, uh, for a particular industrial area in town where the short-term rental may not be the highest and best use of the property. So, gives this body an opportunity to review that and make that decision. Uh, the only other change that we're, uh, proposing in this amendment is, is something that is not substantive. Uh, it's a wording, a verbiage change in the name of our department. Um, it's currently listed as Department of Planning and Community Development. Uh, we're not known as that, uh, across the city, and, uh, don't really, there, there are a lot of things to community development now on what we, we do. So, planning and zoning is what we're customarily referred to. So, just changing that.
Pretty good. That will just be a first reading, and we will have a public hearing and a second reading at the March twenty.
Yes.
Very good. Any questions from the body? All right. We will consider us adjourned until Monday.